Twenty. Uh, it is 2:12 PM. This is a workshop. I'd like to call this workshop to order. Do we have any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion, please?
My move that we approve the agenda as written.
Do I have a second? Further discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Aye.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, moving on to three projects. Discuss employee salary study with Ms. Schmelzer.
All righty. Um, for the record, Julie Schmelzer, Director of County Operations. So, I just wanna, um, go through a little history with you. So, um, the county hasn't had a salary study in quite a while. And back in last year, the board actually approved, um, the Finance Department and myself working together on a salary study. So, um, Charlene Harvey had done a lot of preliminary work, um, with a consultant as well to determine who we would use for comparables. And then, um, as you know, she left, so I kinda picked up where it left off. Um, I'm gonna go through some work or some information with you today. This has not been discussed individually at a management meeting yet, so we still have to go through some reviews or through that process. But, um, before we can go further, we do need some questions from the board before we can proceed. So I just wanna go through some historical numbers with you, um, just looking at the last decade, okay? So, um, we have 21 road employees, and over the past 10 years, they have only received four cost of living adjustments and zero steps. We have the SEIU Union, um, which has 24 members. They've received three cost of living, uh, adjustments and one step increase. We have non-rep employees, which are managers and some of our administrative people, such as Brenda or JJ. Um, we have 32 of those folks. And they have received three cost of living adjustments in the last 10 years and zero step increases. Which basically tells you when somebody comes to work for the county, whatever you're hired at is what you stay at unless you get a cost of living raise. That's what's been happening. Teamsters, which is law enforcement, um, they've received seven cost of living adjustments and 10, 10, they've, 10 times they've had step increases. I do wanna just make a comment on that because that seems like a lot, but they were really, really far behind, okay? So what we did with the Teamsters Union was basically to try and get them up where they should be. So it looks like a lot, but that was a long work in process to get them where they are. In the salary study, I did not address the Teamsters. I did not look at law enforcement. Um, we're gonna be renegotiating that contract soon, so we'll probably look at that with updated numbers at that time. So overall, with the exception of a one-time increase for the SEIU members, 83 of our 117 employees have never had a step increase since beginning employment with Curry County. Therefore, as you know, we approved conducting the study. So what the process was, we had, um, the consultant had told us, you know, in general, use, um, other counties that were within 5,000 population. So, uh, most of our comparables are within 5,000, but we also had to make some other adjustments, which means you ended up, we ended up picking up a county that was not within 5,000 population. Um, so we, we're supposed to look at, you know, land area, median household incomes, per capita income, poverty rates, housing units, housing costs, persons per household, things like that, to determine what the comparables should be. And based on that, Baker actually was, ended up joining in that list of comparable counties. So the ones that we are comparing ourselves to are Baker, Crook, Wood River, Tillamook, and Jefferson.
Very good.
And I'll tell you right away, it was difficult to get the information from some of them, so we didn't have the best comparables with some of these. Um, we had very good information from Baker and Jefferson, which actually ended up being really advantageous because Baker's kinda the low and Jefferson is kinda the high out of those five. So I still felt pretty comfortable with the information that we were using. So when we're doing a wage study, we have to look at the equities. We have to look at external equity, which is, um, you know, what would that person make if they were not a government employee? Internal equity would be, um, you know, what would somebody within the organization of a similar job or similar responsibilities make? And then the employee equity, which is comparisons of the pay across employees performing the, the similar work, which is where we start looking at Baker and Jefferson and what other people are doing. So, um, the data that we used, the state had some really good data about, um, public sector positions in related to private sector jobs, you know, addressing that external equity. They had done some work on that. We looked at state data, you know, um, the state ranks positions. They have different job descriptions you can look at and compare. They have different salaries you can look at. They have average salaries for positions. Um, I did reach out to the unions to ask them for their data. I asked unions to, um, tell me, you know, what do you, for our comparables, what are the similar wages? I did verify all that data, but I did ask them for that as well to get the unions' input to make sure, basically, they agreed with what we were doing because some of the, the starting data came from them.
Right.
Uh, looked at wage tables, uh, asked for select or random job descriptions from other counties and compared them to ours to make sure we were comparing apples to apples. So the results were, um, some comparables were weak on some positions. Uh, you, some of them don't have that position in their county, or maybe only one of them had that position, so you didn't have much to compare to, so you have to make some adjustments. Um, overall, I had to make adjustments with almost all the positions anyway because, you know, some of them were supervisory, some had higher education requirements than the other counties, some had more or less responsibilities. So, you know, you take the original data and you start making some adjustments for that. The other thing was, um, we, I did do, I saw what one of the counties did is, if somebody is, and I'm gonna use Julie Swift as a good example. So if you have someone who's doing a job, such as payroll, but then they're also doing another job on top of that, they tend to give a, uh, extra percentage or, um, I don't wanna call stipend, but a, in addition, they make an adjustment for that because they're doing more than one person's job. So, um, some, we had a couple of positions like that that we had to adjust because they are doing several people's work. Um, I also looked at vehicle usage, you know? We have some people that use vehicles for work. And, um, what I saw in one of the counties is, the employee gets a choice. You know, if you're gonna use a work vehicle, fine, but you're gonna make $400 less or $200 less, whatever. Um, but, and if they wanna use their own vehicle, well, then they can get that full recommended salary. So you see some adjustments for that in the table as well. Yes, Commissioner?
So on the, the vehicle, you're talking about the employee being able to take it back and forth to work?
Correct.
If they get the 400? Okay, I just wanted to make that clear.
Correct. Um, I'll use an example, um, veteran service. You know, if he were to use that truck, um, that's, that's kind of like a bonus, right? To use that truck to go back and forth to work?
So he's using it for his personal use also?
Um, it, some, they, when, a lot of times the employees, when they're using these vehicles, they're using it to go back and forth from their home to work. And it's because they're usually on call, like in the middle of the night, they're gonna get called out to do something. So it makes sense for them to have that vehicle at their house, so they do use it for commute and then those instances. But what I saw was there should be some adjustment for that. You know, you shouldn't be able to get same salary as everybody else and have a vehicle. So there's adjustments. If you want the vehicle, okay, but you're gonna make a little less then, so. Um, what we found were most positions are below the comparable average. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone. Um, I have to say the road department was, in my opinion, across the board, when you look at a whole department, it was by far the most grossly underpaid out of all of our positions. So they're, they were about 12 to 16% off the top of my head, below the average.
You just answered it. Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
So I just wanna give you a little example here. So this is an example of one of the tables we have right now. In our county, we have, um, several unions, as you know. We have the non-reps as well. And then the unions have several ranges, and each range has a page in a book. So these are, I don't know how many tables are in here offhand, but 30, Julie, maybe? 25, 30? More than that? 40, 50? There's a lot of tables. If you haven't looked at our salary and wage schedule, there's a lot. It's a whole book. So we go through and we do this for every position, basically, it almost has its own range and, and, um, we have steps. You can see we have six steps, A through F. Um, we have four longevity opportunities there. Here's another example, if you are SEIU, range 12. What I was trying to do was get away from, and I, this is what I saw the other counties were doing, so, um, not all of them, but some of them, was trying to get away from this idea of many, many schedules and trying to simplify it. So there's something out there called broadbanding, where you get them all into one table. So this is what I proposed. Don't look at the numbers, okay? I'm just talking about the style right now. And so you have all the data in one chart. So maybe your admin person is at a step C, and you can see, you know, what, what grade, um, I'm sorry, maybe they're a range C and then you can see what step they're at. Or maybe, you know, council might be a Y, for example. But everybody is in the same chart to their, everyone's using one document and one point of reference.
I like that, actually.
So before we can go further with the salary study, there are some questions we need answered from the board. So, um, one is, I need to know if the board overall supports the approach that has been taken so far, or if there's something else they would like to see us do to get these numbers. I have to tell you, I feel pretty comfortable with what has been done already. There's been a lot of time invested in it from staff's point, but I'm interested in your point, point of view.
Mr. Gold?
Okay, I, I was just kind of looking at it, and we're talking about job descriptions. Are these job descriptions that have been updated? Cause I know some of the people have worked here for a long time and their descriptions have never been updated. So are we looking at their updated descriptions?
That's a really good question. So let me back up a little bit. So last year, we had the employees look at their job, or the managers look at their employees' job descriptions and get us how they thought they should be revised. And we did that because we still have to adjust all the job descriptions to be compliant with the pay equity law. So, um, when I was comparing them, I was comparing our proposed job descriptions, which to me is what they feel they're really doing. I thought it was only fair to use the most current version, which reflected the current responsibilities.
So did everybody churn something in? Just curious.
Pretty much. I think they either sent us, they either said that what they, I think we have most... Yeah, they either said it was okay, the way it was written, or they made changes. But I think I heard from all of the departments, I think everybody got a something, or most of them. Okay, so I'll keep going unless you reject it.
Can we back up one page again, please?
Sure.
I'd like to see that again. You can enlarge that, can't you? That's right, I can see it.
Um, that's...
Step difference, okay, the step difference comes, uh, you've got on that sheet is 4%.
Yeah, this, this example is if the, if it's a 4% between each step, so in other words, it goes up 4%, um, you know, this only shows two longevity categories, which we'll talk about. And it also shows a 4.25% for longevity increase or a 4.5, which we'll talk about that as well, as we get through this.
Sure does make it clean.
That's always how, how I've worked, when I worked for an entity. There was one salary schedule and it was based on education and all this other stuff.
I think most of them are going towards the broadbanding aspect, but...
I'd like to ask Ms. Swift if you wouldn't mind stepping up there real quick. What do you think of that, the broadbanding, uh, way of doing it?
Well, I think it's, it's a good starting place, but when you have unions involved, um, and they're all negotiating different things, you know, then that's, that's where it kinda comes apart. And then you've got your nonrepresented people, so as long as you're gonna be consistent across the board and everybody gets the same thing, then it can work.
Or there's no more unions.
Not my choice. So I, I, you know, I think in theory, it's, it's a good concept, but, um, I know there's several, I was looking at, um, City of Medford the other day, and they have three or four different categories of schedules based on nonrepresented, management, union, whatever. So it's, I think it's a good starting place, but when you've got other factors involved, it may not stay in that nice neat little chart.
Yeah, that would change right away.
Thanks.
Unless everybody agreed to the same thing and don't count on that.
So just, oh...
Mr. Boyce?
Thank you. Just the year 2019, 20, and then the, uh, the letter's coming down. What, is, is that years?
No, so, um, like a entry-level custodian is usually at a grade A.
The years are the numbers at the top then?
Right.
Gotcha, okay.
And then the steps are the years. So just a comment about, you know, if the unions want to vary from this, each union can have their own broadbanding thing, but you're still only looking at four sheets then, instead of a whole booklet of sheets. So it's still, I think, a much more manageable process.
Thank you.
Um, so if the board accepts the methodology, um, we'd have to know if the board supports the starting salary for each position, or basically supports the data that I came up with. And I do have to say that, um, I, I did have one department head say, hey, I have a question on some and I wanna review them. And I said, definitely there's a time to review that before everything is finalized. So this is in general, does the board accept, and you, and you have the numbers, do you accept the starting, that, the starting salary for each range? In other words, that doesn't mean that's what somebody's paid. That means if you walk in the door today and you start at the bottom of the level, that's where the salary range starts.
Mr. Gold?
Okay, my, my concern about some of this is because of what's happening with COVID and our budget. Are we gonna be able to support all of these raises? And most of them were raises, I went through and compared. And I'm not against raises, trust me, but we may be between a rock and a hard place when we look at the numbers.
We might be, and, and I want to, that's why we have to get through this process before we can run the numbers. I do know there are, um, I will say this on behalf of the department heads and the employees this past year, knowing we were working on the salary study, they cut back where they could. If they didn't have to fill a position, they didn't. You know, I think we've saved, I mean, I think our budget that we just went through really showed a lot how they were really trying to buckle down. And I really think it's because they understand these employ, I mean, it's, I have to be honest with you, it's not fair to take a job and never get an increase, right?
Totally agree. I'm not, you know, I'm not against doing raises.
So, um, the departments really did buckle down. Some of the departments actually have ways of paying for them. Um, for example, the road department has the road fund, um, and I, and then like the assessor's office, of course, he has the CFA grant, which can help you for his. Um, we had the building safety department just really try and work like a workhorse to try and get money in their budget so to make sure they could give employees raises. So, um, I really won't know the overall impact until we get through with all the questions and then Julie can run the numbers.
Okay, so could we go through this and say we're in favor of it in concept, but when something hits the road?
Yes, because you know...
We may have to, you know?
Right, because we can't make, we can't make official decisions in here. You're just giving me guidance for the chart.
Right, right.
This still has to come before the board for an actual vote of approval or denial.
Council?
Um, thanks, Mr. Chair. And Julie, you know, there's a workshop, so I'm hoping I can kinda throw some stuff in here. Um, two positions I wanted to talk about. One was our payroll and personnel coordinator, and I'm sorry to put her on the spot, but, and, and the only reason I'm talking is because I come from a different place, uh, where we had five different positions in our, um, personnel department. We had a personnel director, we had a deputy personnel director, we had a payroll manager, and then like a payroll clerk. And, um, and so I, I looked at those, I looked at the job descriptions, I asked Julie to look at the job descriptions, cause my observations of Julie Swift, I've always considered her like our HR director. She participated in all the management meetings. And I understand you've given her kind of a split designation and stuff. The salary scale at Medford was, uh, really, they were able to pay a lot more. I went from like 130 a year to 90 a year, which is a, basically a 30% reduction in pay coming here. But looking at their, even just their payroll manager, not even their HR director, um, because Julie's doing a lot of the work of an HR director, but even there, um, that payroll manager, just payroll is 3780 to four, it's actually 5488 to 7,003 a month, but cutting that by 30% is 3780 to 4902. Uh, and that's just the payroll manager part. Their HR director is a lot more. I just think that Julie Swift does a lot of HR director stuff. She's done on every employment discipline matter we have. Um, she does all the hiring and, and those kinda things and processing that. I just, if there's a way to really, and I'm just, this is information for the board because you're gonna be asked to approve all this, but I'm just giving you, um, a person who's been able to watch the work of Julie Swift, as well as compare it to, uh, HR director who had a bunch of degrees from colleges and stuff. And she's, she's doing a lot, a lot, a lot of that work. And, and I know some of the change, and she did a lot more of the labor negotiations and things like that, and I know some of the change is based on you, but again, I, we've also just heard Julie Schmelzer is, you know, maybe not gonna be here, like, for years to come. And I just think that, uh, to the extent that Julie Schmelzer is able to absorb some of the HR director work in her tasks, um, I have a feeling those will atrophy back to Julie Swift. And I'm just talking about the equity and stuff, so if there's any way to reconsider weighting Julie's, um, workload, I think giving more weight, i.e., bumping her up from the, you know, coordinator and code enforcement officer to more of a, up higher, um, into a job with more kinda managerial stuff. And anyhow, that's, that's that. And then the other one I wanted to talk about was Brenda. Brenda gave me an earful about her job and things like that. And I'm not sure Julie, if she sent that stuff to you or not.
She did.
So, and maybe we can talk offline about that, but, um...
Yeah, so that's why I did say, that's why I did say early on, there is an opportunity to appeal, which we have to go through yet, if somebody wants to appeal.
Oh, wow, okay.
You know, their position. Um, I can't explain why positions are where they are. I, I really don't wanna get into individual positions right now. Um, and I do appreciate the comparison, but keep in mind, we have to compare it to the five.
Well, we, we...
You know, I mean...
I, I guess we do, but you said that five didn't really have apples to apples either, so we, we can use reasonableness tests as well.
I mean...
Yeah, I know.
I made 102,000 in Josephine County.
Yep.
Come on. So...
Well...
We have to, we have to stick with what the comparables are for...
Sure.
According to the wage study. So, um, so then there's other things too, is, um, should all employees work full-time, which is 40 hours versus, I should say, full-time meaning 40 hours versus 37 and a half hours? Um, right now, we have three departments that are at 37 and a half hours. And, um, one of, one of the things that complicates in the wage study is you have charts for 37 and a half hour employees, you have charts for 40 hour employees. And, you know, I think we addressed some of this through some other, um, negotiations we had earlier in the week, but, um, just as a policy, are we gonna say our employees work 40 hours a week or do they work 37 and a half? Because that does depend on the data that we put together and the wage schedules that we bring forward to you. Also, currently, the step, the increase between steps is 5%. Um, I think that's one of the reasons why we haven't given steps, is it's just too much. Um, I, you know, do I think it's fair? Absolutely. Do I think it's realistic? It has shown that it is not for our county. So I think the board has to decide what percentage do they want between steps? Is it 3%? Is it 4%? Or is it 5%? Or some other percentage? And then also, how many steps should there be before longevity applies? Currently, we have six steps before you can hit longevity. And then after that, um, and then we have different forms of longevity. So the draft before you has the six. And then also, um, what should the longevity percentage be? For example, right now, we have four different opportunities for longevity, so years 5 to 10, it's 1.5%. 10, you can see it up there, it slowly goes up. Um, the longevity table encourages employees to stay a long time, which is really good for institutional knowledge and helps reduce, reduce turnover. However, it can also lead to complacency sometimes, and I'm not saying that's here, I'm just saying in general, and, uh, or higher pers. So sometimes the lower longevity rates helps with turnover and welcoming new employees and keeping your costs down overall for the organization.
What is a lower longevity rate? What do you mean by that?
Um, instead of, uh, 5% maybe, it's 2.5% or something. Right, so then it says, or should longevity be reversed? Which would reverse it the way that we currently do, in saying you're getting a higher percentage upfront, which would, helps you retain those talented employees for a while, but then they could easily leave and go someplace else for a higher salary. But it does save you money in the long run and addresses some of those other issues.
Do the other counties use this? The reverse?
Um, so... Um, to be honest with you, I don't know if the ones, I can't remember if the ones that we're comparing do. I could check that. I'm going off of HR books and stuff like that, which talks about the different ways of dealing with longevity. Or do we take a different approach and give higher rewards, but fewer of them? And that's what the proposal, um, has, is it just basically has two opportunities for longevity, you know, from year seven to 10, you make something, and then from 10 on, you make something else. And then there's the question of location. So if Sally is a state worker right now, making $3,700 a month, does she automatically go to step four in the new system? Maybe that means it's 4,100 a month? Or does she start at the next closest range that's above her? And what I've seen is the latter opportunity is typically what they do, but we would want the board to look at that as well. It would be, it depends where they put her. Um, you know, if she's, um, we'd have to look at what the job description would say for it, but she would go to the next closest...
Step in the range.
Step in the range above, that's above her.
Cause some of the, don't some of the ranges have overlapping, like...
Yeah, that's why you have to find out where they are in that big table.
Yeah.
And see where they go in there. And it may mean they have to go up to the next range. Okay. I'd have to look at it, Julie. I would have to look at the chart to follow along with it, but I would say the 30 to 100, because you want to give them the increase, but, I mean, knowing that everything is changing for some of the positions quite a bit. I mean, you're not gonna give somebody a thousand dollars more a month. You know, you're gonna try and get it as equitable as you can, so... Absolutely. It'll give them the opportunity to continue to increase before they hit the longevity again.
And that would be to their advantage, I would think.
Yes.
So we would wanna look at their salary and see what's closest to their salary. And if there's something in the table that is at that salary but above, they would go to that part in the, in the table. We would, um, so let's say you're making 3,100 right now with your longevity, but there's a, but your position has an opportunity that maybe in the chart, it says that position should be making 3,200. You'd put them there in the chart so they can start making 3,200 and start accumulating again. Yes.
One quick question. Um, if we were to implement this, is anybody gonna get a salary decrease?
No. Um, there are some positions where it looks, there's a few positions where it looks like they're higher than the average, but they, what happens is they freeze and they continue to get the COLAs, but they don't get steps anymore. So, um, and a lot of times it's because they've been here a while. Or maybe their position currently is higher than it should be, the, the salary range for that position. But nobody would ever go down. I don't, and we talked about this a little bit yesterday. My understanding is you can't legally go down. You can't reduce somebody's salary. So then the other question is exempt versus non-exempt. So right now, we do, one of the things that I've found a little frustrating since I've been here is you have coordinators, which are basically department heads, running departments, but they still have to track all their hours. And it's made it really hard for some of them to even get away to use the vacation time. So why are they being, why are they tracking hours? You know, if they're working as a department, why not let them be an exempt employee? And they're paid for those hours regardless whether they work forty or fifty hours. Now, there were laws in the books that said, you know, you, they define an exempt versus non-exempt, you know, you had to supervise your employees, some of this other stuff. But those laws have changed. Let me just go back here, I think it's under this one. Yeah, let me just keep going a little bit here. There is something else in here where the rules had changed, but non-exempt basically would, employees are required to pay time and a half if they put in more than their forty hours. So right now, we have coordinators or basically department heads that are getting time and a half. We don't have the money, but they're accumulating the time at that. So they have to take that time off. Here we go though, but the laws have changed that define exempt versus non-exempt. So effective of this year, employees can now be considered exempt and ineligible for overtime if they are paid salary versus hourly, earn at least six hundred and eighty-four dollars a week, and paid salary for any week that they work. So that is something that would impact how we do this chart, basically. Do these people now be considered exempt employees instead of keeping them as non-exempt employees? It goes on to just kind of explain how you classify exempt employees. You have the executive employee, where the primary duty is management, they direct the work of two or more, they have input on changing status of an employee, their input is given weight in the decision. It also says they can hire or fire, but in our county, no employees can hire or fire. So I cross that out. Then there's also the, an administrative employee can be considered exempt if their work is directly related to the management or general business operations and primary duty must, must include discretion and independent judgment with respect to matters of significance. I would use as an example, somebody in that position would be somebody like Brenda, who has to make decisions on some of those matters. Then you have your professional employee, which is more like what we have with our coordinators or some of our department heads right now. They may not be, they may not supervise two or more people, but their primary work or what they're doing does require an advanced degree of knowledge in a special field. So they either have to, I'll use Jeremy Dumas for an example in that. You know, with his position, he has to have a lot of training, it's a specialized field. It's not like somebody can just walk in off the street and pick up that job and do it. So this just kind of talks about what we were talking about. I don't know if people realize it, but some of our department heads, managers and division leaders, some are sometimes called coordinators, they're not all exempt. They do have to track their hours. And like I said, they are forced to take off time because they are accumulating hours. And if they can't, then we have to pay them out, which is something that we don't budget for, we don't plan on that happening. But good example is the COVID crisis, you know, Jeremy Cherie, well, Cherie is exempt, but Jeremy, some are, people like that put in a lot of hours. Jeremy is exempt. And so we want to know if we want to correct that as well. So like I talked about, we have to, based on what the board tells us today, we'd want to update those wage tables. I did talk about how we do want to bring them to the managers before we bring them to for approval. We do want to allow for that appeal period if somebody doesn't agree with their wage. We will, this will require a supplemental budget if we're doing this this year yet. And as part of this process, we do know some employees are currently working out of class. I know of two of them right now. We have held off all year correcting that based, waiting for this, but that should be, some of those matters should be addressed during this process as well as fixing some of that. And then finally, we would want to go back and revise those job descriptions to address the pay equity, to correct whether they're exempt or not, and to correct what range and great, what range those positions are at. So those were questions, but we do, so I'm going to go back a little bit and see if we can get some direction on some of these matters so we can move forward with it. I think it started right here. Okay, so again, just in general, and I, again, we're, we realize we're going to have to have some appeals or people are going to have to, some people will want to discuss where they're at in there, and they'll have to produce evidence as to why they should be reclassed, things are in a different position. But in general, do we, do we support the approach? Okay.
I do.
All right. In general, do you support the starting salary for each position? And I know you're having to trust the data that was presented to you. But, you know, it kind of shows, I think custodian is the lowest, council in my position is the highest.
In general, yes, but I think we'd want to see a better breakdown.
Okay.
On, on exactly where the numbers would be on everyone.
And that information was shared earlier, but that was like maybe a month or so ago. So I can resend that out to the commissioners so they can look that over.
Yeah, I mean, that's mine, I'm not speaking for the other two commissioners.
I'd have to agree.
Okay. And then, do you agree all employees should be working forty hours?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Step increases, what percentage would you like us to put in the chart?
I like three.
You like three?
I'm going to say three, two, simply because we're in a financial pickle. And not only that, you look at, and I'm going to put quotes around inflation because I think the numbers are skewed, but.
Okay. And I know I cannot commit this board to future boards, and I know we can't make decisions here, but I do hope that by going with three, we can give the employees some confidence that there's a better chance that they'll get step increases then by going with the lower percentage between steps.
Mr. Boyce?
It's true, the unions have to agree to that, we understand. Well, so we do know what has been happening with the other unions. None of them have gotten steps except SEIU once.
Okay.
And then, how many steps should there be before longevity applies? Like I said, the current chart has six, and the proposed has six steps as well before longevity would kick in.
I think that's what everything, that's what, that shows you, we should maintain that, if you guys agree.
Some counties do six, some do more. Yeah, so like. So if you're looking at, let me just go back here. If you're looking at this range, range twelve in the SEIU, you see there's step A, B, C, D, E, F, those are six.
Okay, that's just not the way it's been in practice though.
That's correct. They should have, or.
But for the longevity.
Yeah. That's correct. So it's, that's how the tables are right now, we just haven't used it that way. Okay, and then how many steps should there be before longevity applies? We said six. And then what should the longevity percentage be? Like I said, we can say with something like this, where you have four longevity categories, five to ten years, ten to fifteen, fifteen to twenty, twenty and more. Or you can do something where it's more seven to ten years and ten plus. I think for this one.
My problem, my problem is with like the sheriff's department. You know, he, he gets these deputies trained up, well, he has in the past, now that the salaries have come up, I don't think he's had that problem nearly as much since. I don't even know if he's had that problem at all, but he was for the longest time telling me that he would get these deputies all trained up and then they'd leave. And, you know, the county just lost X amount of dollars in training these officers. So I would imagine for people like our road crew and, and for Mr. Colen, you know, you've mentioned as well, how much, how much time it takes you to put into people. I don't know, I guess we can't do contracts with employees to make them say, I'm going to stay here for three years or whatever, but, I don't know, it's, that's kind of a, it's almost like you want to pay them more upfront than, you know, the reverse one, but, I don't know, that one's kind of up in the air.
And some of the, the unions, I'm too, some of them may question this or revise this for them. So again, we're looking, you know, in general, do we want four opportunities for longevity or two? You know? When you look at the, how long some of these employees have been here, you know, some departments definitely have more longevity than other departments.
I never had four, but I'm just going by what I'm used to.
You're used to four, you're used to two?
Says she never had four.
Oh, okay.
There was like two in the whole salary schedule, and you had to wait twenty minute, twenty years before you got the first one.
Yeah, some of them really make you wait a long time. The way the longevity is now, it's not cumulative, so it's not like you get one and a half percent and then another two and a half percent, and so it's not.
So in other words, you're saying it's not compounding?
No.
So it's that base at the top, and then you get two and a half percent of that, and then you go back to that original base and then five percent?
After five years, you get one and a half percent more, and it's actually based on step B of the range you're in. Then after ten years, you get two and a half percent of that.
The original base. So in other words, it's not compounded?
No, no. So it's not, it's not by the, by the time you end up, you've got seven or twelve and a half percent on top of your salary.
Yeah, I got you.
So, and that's why I would be concerned about reversing. Would that be compounded? Do you get five percent after five years, and then it would actually drop?
Right.
So that's, or does it compound?
Well.
I'd be hesitant to do compounding.
So let's talk about the number first, how many longevity periods first?
I like two.
I, I'll go with two.
Mr. Boyce?
Question. So if this is a goal, I, I might be misinterpreting here, but if we went five years to average this out to try and bring up, I'm just pulling that figure, it could be ten years, could be ten months. Give us a rough idea of what that would cost the county an additional payroll per year? If you, if, based on a five-year plan, or to, to bring everybody up to what we're hoping is the equal basis relative to job description and responsibility.
So let me just understand your question correctly. So if we said after, when you're here five years, you could start getting longevity pay, you want to know what that would be, right?
Yeah, just a general sense, I mean, it's, you know, I wouldn't hold you to it, but.
Yeah, we would have to, we'd have to calculate that.
Okay.
So were you on for number two or four?
Two and a half, you can always go up, you know, if we were required to do that.
Now, where's, it's two, two examples or four examples? See, there's four different ones there? Would you prefer to have two longevity tables or four?
Or something like this commissioner, where it's at seven, at, between years seven and ten, your longevity kicks in, and then after eleven and above, you're at another longevity rate.
Seven years is a long time. So initially.
But let's hope you're getting.
Actually, I like that right there.
But you're getting steps along the way.
Seven to ten, and then ten and above, or eleven and above.
What this does is it also increases if you, if you do something like, so right now, we're just saying the number, you know, should there be two longevity versus four? And then you also have to decide when that longevity kicks in. So, you know, in this example, if longevity kicks in at year seven to ten, that means you now have seven steps before longevity hits. Right now, we have, I'm, I'm sorry, that's not correct. We have, the, the board said they wanted to see six. So after you did your six years or your six steps in your seventh year, then you'd be at a longevity rate and you'd be locked in there till you're, you're through year ten at one rate. And then when you, if you're still here on that eleventh year, you're longevity, you get a new longevity rate and you're there forever.
Whatever happened to, gee, I like your work, I'm going to give you a buck an hour raise, and hopefully you pick that up in the next six months, Jill.
That's the private sector.
I was going to say, you can't do that in government.
Well, I think we'll do the chart with the two because I've got two nodding their head, and we can always look at and revisit it. And then we have to look at, you know, the, what those percentages are. I think I've heard that the board is not really in favor of compounding. So they're probably looking more like we currently do, where it's one point five percent to, and two point five percent. I think we need to talk about those percentages, what we'd want to see for seven to ten and then eleven plus.
Well, let's compromise, say two and four.
Two and four.
Well, five to ten there is one and a half. And that covers the first ten years. But I could see doing a little bit more like three percent, three and a half percent for the eleven plus.
So three percent for seven to ten. So for seven to ten, what would it be for the first longevity?
One and a half or two.
Okay.
And I said two, and then fifteen to, fifteen plus.
Eleven, no, it'd be eleven.
Eleven plus, four.
And I said three or three and a half.
And I'm not going to argue over a percent.
We haven't heard.
Yeah.
Mr. Boyce?
I'll, I'll pass for now, I think you're on the right track.
So in the draft, that was given to you. So we talked about, you know, if we went with, one of the suggestions was, you know, if you had three percent between steps, then what I had put in there was for longevity between seven and ten, the, it would be three point two five percent.
I see that, yes.
And then if it was long, eleven years and more, it would have been at three point five percent. So that's one option, that's, that's what I had put in the draft.
Why don't we do a, on your first one, do a two point five and do a three point five on the second one?
Two point five and three point five.
That kind of evens it out because you're only doing it twice instead of four.
Okay with that? All right, let's.
It's a little more on the bottom than I wanted to give, but I think it's fair that way.
Okay. I got that one. And. Correct, so just, just to clarify, so when you get to year seven, you're no longer going to get that three percent step, you're going to get your longevity step, which is two point five percent. And then when you hit eleven years, it's going to bounce to three point five.
Right.
So it gives you the incentive to hang in there because in a couple of years, you're really going to be increasing faster than the other steps.
Go back one.
Go back one, sure.
Yeah, the second pair, well, yeah. Reduced turnover, third line down. Incentive to stay, that's basically what you're saying there. Institutional knowledge, yeah, that's.
And saving money on training, so.
Oh, golly. That might be the biggest.
And then there was this one, which is, you know, I, so if Sally's a step four now, is she a step four later? My recommendation is she goes to the next closest, that's an increase for her, not necessarily a step four in the new.
Yes.
Chart. For some people, that may be a step four, I don't know, but we'll have to look at that. And before the board does a final approval on anything, we'll actually have all the employees broken out so you can see where they're at and where they would start based on these numbers that we're discussing today.
I think the important thing is not the steps to begin with, it's making sure everybody gets at least a raise. And if they end up at a lower step, they're really going to be ahead because they're going to be able to get more steps before they get that longevity, so.
I agree, and I hope employees understand that you may, it may look like you're going down, but you're really going up and. down, but you're really going up in income and it's going to allow you to get that 3% step longer.
Yeah, long-term, they're going to be better off.
I agree.
I, I do want to be clear on one thing though, you know, I'd like to compare apples to apples on this. So I, I will say, looking at both of these, the way you've got them printed out and talking, where they talk about each employee and their starting wage, one in black, one in red, I'd like to print those out and then basically cut and paste them next to each other so I could see apples to apples that way.
I'll put that to, I'll actually put together charts for you so you can see current and then base and then what they would be making.
Because I'd like to look at each, each employee and their position as well.
Absolutely, so...
Yeah, I did that by hand because I wanted to see.
Sure. Okay, and then the next ones are more for the job descriptions when we work on them and that is, I guess, do we agree that looking at our coordinators, managers, they should all be considered exempt where we're not tracking every hour beyond 40 that they're putting in?
Yeah, you have to at least supervise like X number of people.
No, that's, that's the old law.
Okay.
So that's why I put the new one up there. That became effective January 1st.
Okay.
And most of ours do, so we'll, Julie and I'll have to work on the job descriptions, but that comes later, so... So that's where we're at. We, you've given us the information we need to move further with the process. We'll get it back to you as soon as we can. I'm not sure how long it'll take to get those numbers put together, but other people may have questions, I don't know, but I'm done with what I had to ask the board.
Thank you, Ms. Melzer. Great work. Alrighty, any further questions? Any further? Oh, Mr.?
So Jim Colan County Assessor, I've been communicating with Julie right along ever since she released her first results on this and, and I think I'm, I'm satisfied that it's, I, I, there's three positions in the assessor's office, well, three position categories in the assessor's office that I think probably weren't compared to their like positions in the other five counties or other six counties. Two of them were probably compared to positions that were lower and it's probably just based on, on the name that was used to compare against. One of you says all the time, if you've seen one county, you've seen one county, right? Different counties name their positions differently, at least in the assessor's office. And then there's actually one position in the office that, that was probably compared against other positions in other counties with more responsibility. So Julie, I heard her talking about it here, having the opportunity to appeal. I don't necessarily like the name appeal, but...
Discuss, how's that?
As, as long, as long as, you know, I've got the opportunity to get you or whomever, I mean, you and Julie, the opportunity to see the job descriptions from other counties that, that I believe my positions would be comparable to, I think that's important.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think I heard it said that whatever you go with here, it'd be subject to the union doing what, bargaining on it or?
Well, the unions may have, they may have different opinions on longevity or some of those things that we haven't discussed, so, yeah, they're going to have to look at the, the numbers themselves.
So, and, and then I think, I think all your work and, you know, I think you had other people working on it. One of the things I mentioned to you the other day was, I saw one of your notes that the basis for the comparables were counties within 5,000 in population and then you, you do say that you use Baker, which I, is not within 5, 5,000 in population of Curry County. It's, it's less than 6,000 or more than 6,000 away from Curry County, less than Curry County. So I don't think it's a comparable particularly. And, you know, my, my biggest concern, and I brought it up during the budget committee meetings, is parity within the system. And it, it looks like Julie's done a lot of good work with regard to that. You know, one thing I will say for the current salary schedule that we're, we're using is when that salary study was done in 2001 or whenever it was, I know that we hired an outside company, it was expensive, we had a team come and spent weeks, if not months, interviewing employees and then interviewing other counties. And I think that, you know, in, in the current salary schedule that we have, I think they got the parity pretty right, but that doesn't mean, you know, I know that it's gotten convoluted over the years, so... Those are my comments for now. Julie, thank you for continuing to send me more and more information and I know it took you a while to put it together, it's going to take me a while to get through it, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Anything further? Mr. Christiansen?
Thank you, commissioners. Yeah, uh, thank you for this wage study, Julie. It's important to the road department. As you can see from our work, our department has been the worst damaged wage-wise of all the departments and it's really reflected in me being able to hire employees. And so like right now, I requested a post mechanic two months ago, knowing that Rocky's last day is next week, and I haven't been able to fill that position. We've have local mechanics, other agencies, we pay too le, we pay so much less that, you know, they were considering jumping ship coming to us, but they're going, they're not going to do it for a pay cut. I did that for a year and a half with my senior accounting specialist, had other agencies want to jump ship, come work with us in the road department, can't take the pay cut. And so we fill our positions for people that want to move from out of state here because they want to live here. Other than that, we kind of fill out the bottom end and then there's no step increases. And so it makes it really difficult as a manager hiring people for 15, 16 bucks an hour and then they get no, no steps. You can see for like 10 years, we've received no steps. So, you know, I would argue that, you know, the road department has a road fund, a lot of that was developed over the backs of the road department staff not getting wage increases for years and years and years. And so I'm currently in a position where I'm unable to fill a mechanic position, but yet that, our department, that position's based on inter-agency work with like 13 other agencies' equipment. And if I can't fill that position, I'm going to have to write letters to these 13 other agencies. I'm not going to be able to take care of your equipment anymore and you'll have to go, and maybe that's a good thing, go out to the local contractors and they'll take care of the local community, but it's going to be really interesting to see, you know, we're going to have our first inter-agency chip sale project this year and the state is going to submit their wages for their positions and we're going to submit our wages and it's going to be really interesting to see where things fall out with this. But as you can see, like my office manager per this study is 29% underpaid and it's significant. And so appreciate anything you can do for the road department and the county.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Swift?
Um, my only concern with the way that this was done is you've got one person deciding what range positions should be in without knowing really what some of those positions actually do. The old LGPI way, in my mind, was a little more fair because it was based on factors and it was put into a scoring sheet and told where it was supposed to be, which we tried to do with HR answers, but they ditched us. But that's my only concern is it, it goes back to kind of like, well, the favoritism where I know what this person does and I like what they do, so they should go in this range and this person, I don't really know what they do and I think they should be in this range, so that's my only issue with it.
Thank you.
Just a comment on that. No, Charlene had done some grading that way and then it was based on looking at the job descriptions. As a matter of fact, and I think I told the board this before, you can't look at the person, you have to look at the position because somebody might be there 20 years, but you have to look at, if somebody walked in today, what is the fair wage to pay them starting home?
All right. Mr. Colan?
Yeah, I'm sorry to keep bothering you, but Rich came up and, and, and said something that jogged my memory and, and so I'd just be putting a plug in for him. I've, I've got a son that works in, in, at the same type of job that Rocky does out of the road department. My son's been doing it for probably less than 10 years and he's in the $30 to $35 per hour wage range and Rich tells me that Rocky's salary range is $25 an hour, so...
Where does he work?
He works up in Toallerton, which is cer, which is certainly different, but, but mechanics are hard to come by. They're even having a tough time, I mean, they're given bonuses for new hires.
I understand that, but the cost of living and everything up there, it's a completely different animal than it is here. Anyway, I'm not saying any...
I know the property taxes are a lot higher.
That went flat.
Cost of living in, in, in Portland area versus Gold Beach area, I believe, is significantly different, having, having paid rents in both.
Yeah, when you go to the gas station, you explore up there and things are all a lot less expensive.
But then you look at...
Okay.
Property tax and some of that other stuff, so rents.
Is that all we have?
Yeah, I know.
All right. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned. Workshop, this is your... All right, we are going to go back.